The public meetings act. An adequate notice of this meeting has been transmitted on October 5th, 2018 by the Secretary to the Esberry Park Press, the Independent, the Two River Times, the Township Clerk, and has been posted in the meeting room and in the entrance hall and town hall. All pursuant to section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Mr. Admiral. Here. Mr. Herron.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Mr. Lucarelli.
Here.
Mr. Patanatopoulos.
Here.
Mr. Pesci.
Here.
Mr. Briamonte.
Here.
This is the death stuff. Please rise for the pleasure of the evening. Mr. Briamonte. Please.
I'm glad to be here. I'm the United States of America. To the Father, to the Holy Spirit, to the nation under God, and to the people of this land, with the great and precious grace of God.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to honor the military and police who have been wounded or killed in action. Thank you. Please be seated.
Continued public hearing. Item number one. New Jersey Natural Gas Company, NJNG, 960 Homedale Road, block 13. Lot 13, in the OL-2 zone. Preliminary final site plan number 2018-1. Applicant seeks variances to construct a proposed regulator station, access and utilities located within a 16.51 acre site owned by Homedale Venture LLC, an improved office park and cell tower.
Good evening, board members. Nancy Skidmore from Conne Fowey. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Jersey Natural Gas Company.
Okay. Uh, do you want to give us a minute?
Right.
One of our members, Bill Nemsek, has resigned as a member of the zoning board. And so Chris Briamonte, an alternate who's been here for this application, is going to be seated as a regular member going forward in Mr. Briamonte and Mr. Nemsek's favor. Congratulations, Mr. Briamonte.
Thank you. Yeah, so before you start, the conflict issue which was raised last time at the end of the hearing, as I indicated to the applicant's attorney in our research, the chairwoman, she can speak herself, but has concluded that she does not have a conflict of interest going through all the missed land use law, common law, and ethics laws that do apply to conflicts, based on her clarification at the end of the last meeting that she does not retain, her firm does not retain your, the same person that you're using for your financial impact, Mr. Rockwell. So I know we had a conversation today again. If you're not going to place any more objections on the record to that, unless I'm wrong, and unless I'm mistaken in your position, Valerie, I think we're ready to move forward.
That's accurate. We can read the circumstances that is already placed on the record, and we don't break those outputs.
Thank you. You can proceed.
Thank you. So just to recap, this is a continued public hearing for a preliminary and final major site plan conditional use, use variance, bulk variance approval for our proposed regulator station at 960 Homedale Road. That is within OL-2 zone of the township. As a reminder, at the last hearing on September 26th, you heard testimony from Mr. Ed Petenta, who is NJNG's sound and air quality expert. Mr. Petenta provided the board with an overview and a summary of the analysis he undertook and the conclusions he reached, and then both the sound and air quality reports that he prepared and filed with the board. He also addressed questions raised by the HEC in three memos and additional questions raised by Mr. Pluses in his review letters. With me tonight, I do have Mr. Jeff Otto, who is our expert real estate appraiser. He did prepare the market study that is before the board was filed three weeks ago, I think, at this point. In addition, with me, Mr. Rich Reading, who is NJNG's expert in the economics of land use, and he prepared a fiscal impact analysis that was filed with the board around the same time, probably three, three and a half weeks ago. So if the board doesn't have any further objections or have any issues you want to put on the record, then I'll call Mr. Otto as my first witness.
You can go ahead and call him. In the meantime, we're just going to put on the record that Mr. Orfanatopoulos was absent at the last meeting, but has listened to the tapes and reviewed the transcripts, and is now fully versed in what happened at our last hearing, and he is ready to proceed.
Mr. Otto. And I believe Mr. Otto was sworn at the last hearing, and he also, his qualifications in the expert of, in the area of real estate appraisal were also accepted by the board.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Otto, can you take the board through the analysis that you conducted in your market study and ultimately the conclusions that you reached in that study?
Good evening. The purpose of my report and study was to determine whether the introduction of a natural gas regulator station onto the site would have any adverse effect on neighborhood property values. And so what I would like to do is take you through the summary of my report, beginning with identifying the neighborhood boundaries that I considered in my investigation. And those boundaries generally run from Roberts Road to the north, down to Main Street, Newman Springs Road, County Route 520 to the south, and including the properties which have frontage on Homedale Road, on both sides of the road, along that expanse. I also considered in my analysis those properties along County Route 520, which are to the north side of 520 and a but those properties along Homedale Road. I found that this neighborhood area is improved with a wide range of land uses. There's a lot of diversity here in terms of the existing uses, and that those uses include agricultural land, undeveloped land, which has green acres restrictions on it. There is, there are office buildings, the largest of which being the property on which this proposed regulator station would be located, as well as the bondage site to the south. There are single-family homes, as well as some residential building lots on which homes have not yet been constructed but which are proposed. In terms of the share, the allocations of uses in this neighborhood, in looking at it by acreage, the largest portion, share of the neighborhood consists of land which is put to an agricultural use or which is vacant and has green acres restrictions on it. That land totals about 480 acres of space and accounts for altogether about 70% of the neighborhood land area. In addition to that, the neighborhood, the office properties account for 18%, so a little less than 20%. The combined single-family homes and the building lots, which are intended for residential development, account for only about 12%. And then there are some miscellaneous uses which are very small in quantities. While the majority of the neighborhood land use is either undeveloped land set aside for green acres restrictions or agricultural, the largest share of value, which is what my study focuses on, is instead for office properties, office, real estate, commercial office space, and single-family homes or building lots. Looking at the value of those properties, the office uses account for 49% of the neighborhood land uses, single-family residential about 30%, and then much smaller percentages of value for the agricultural land and the vacant land which is deeded with a green acres restriction on it. So while the undeveloped land and agricultural uses account for 69% of the land area in the neighborhood, they only account for about 15% of the value in the neighborhood. And that's generally, I'll talk about that later, but that's generally because the land with deed restrictions on it, which limit its use to an agricultural or an open space use, generally have had most of their value stripped away as a result of those restrictions. And that will exist in the before condition. I also considered the distance of these various neighborhood land uses to the proposed regulator station site. And while there is quite a deviation here, considerable deviation from one property to the next, as a general rule, the commercial properties and residential homes and lots are more than 2,000 feet on average in distance from the proposed regulator site. I would note that two of the residential uses are much closer than that, and that would include the property diagonally across the street at 947 Homedale Road, as well as the property at 2 Hopbrook Road. Those are closer, about 350 feet and 450 feet respectively. But in looking at the neighborhood as a whole, those distances are more than 2,000 feet in, on the average, from this proposed site. I also took into consideration the context of neighborhood land uses. As I mentioned earlier, there is a wide diversity of land uses that exist in this neighborhood. And, and that can be seen by the fact that, first of all, we have commercial properties and a solar farm and office buildings and a cell tower, all located in close proximity to residential homes. This is in the pre-existing condition. This already exists. So there is generally a lack of compatibility in this neighborhood area. Another factor that's significant is that Homedale Road is heavily traveled. It's moderately heavily traveled. It is a connector road, running from Route 35 and the Garden State Parkway to the north, all the way down to Main Street. It parallels Route 34, and so some use it as a cut-through road. And so there is already a significant volume of traffic that pass on this road. I also noted that the subject site for which the regulator station is proposed is located in the OL-2 zoning district, which provide, which permits a wide range of uses, some of which are not compatible with residential homes, including offices and laboratories and conference centers. And also, there are conditional uses that are permitted in this zone, which would include public utility uses and wireless communications towers. The significance of this mixture of permitted uses and existing uses is that when looking at the neighborhood from a residential perspective, there already exist adverse influences in this neighborhood, which are having a bearing on property values. The next step was to prepare what's known as a paired sales technique or matched pairs analysis, which is recognized as the most appropriate method of analysis to quantify the effects of a single variable on local real estate values. This technique is used to consider the effects of introducing a cell phone tower into a neighborhood, or a solar farm into a neighborhood, or mixing commercial uses in close proximity to residential uses. It is recognized as being the most appropriate, most accurate technique for this purpose, the purpose of my study, which in this case is the proposed installation of this regulator station. In developing this approach, I began by identifying existing facilities across the northern half of New Jersey, in central and northern New Jersey, identifying where other stations similar to this exist. It was a fairly lengthy list, and in looking at that list, the next step I took was to visit each of these sites personally, to understand not only their locational characteristics, but what the context was for land use in the neighborhood. For example, were they near to residential homes? Were they near to commercial properties, looking for a like-kind situation, a situation which would be similar to, or analogous to, the proposed regulator station on Homedale Road? After visiting those sites and identifying how their neighborhood land use patterns compared, I then verified various measurement criteria for each of those properties, each of those existing regulator stations, to understand distance from the roadway, the number of heater vents that each had, the height of those vents, the vertical height to the top of those vents, and also the extent to which there was any buffering, whether that be fencing or landscaping, which would serve to shield the view of those existing stations to the nearby land uses. Just as a point of reminder, in the case of the proposed station on Homedale Road, the vents, two of them, they'll have a vertical height of 15 feet, and the landscape buffering a height of 17 feet, just as a reference point. After having gathered all of this information, both for the Homedale Road site and the other sites which exist, I then narrowed down the list of sites that I would focus on in my investigation, in my analysis, to those which I felt to be most similar to the Homedale Road location. And in doing this, I focused specifically on existing stations, regulator stations, which were near to either single-family homes or commercial uses, because those are the dominant uses in terms of land value in the subject neighborhood. I made a decision, based upon the information in front of me, that the effects on any nearby agricultural or green acres land would be inconsequential, that there would be no effect on those properties.
Can I just interject there? When you say green acres, are you referring to farmland preservation lands?
There's a little of both. A little of both exist in the neighborhood. And so across the street and slightly to the north of the subject property is an assemblage of, in total, 417 acres of land, which was acquired by various state agencies back in, back in, I think it was 2001. Yes, which was acquired by an assemblage of state agencies in 2001, who acquired a total, the entirety of this 417 acres of land. Subsequent to that acquisition in 2001, a portion of the property was sold, approximately 190 acres of that total 417 acres. And those 190 acres were sold with farmland preservation deed restrictions in place, limiting the use of that acreage solely to agricultural use, in perpetuity. And those, those combined 190 acres were sold to two different entities, one of them being Fox Hollow Farms, and the other one being deeded to a Carmine Casola. But in addition to those 190 acres, there are, there is a remainder of 227 acres, which, while it does not have a farmland conservation easement on it, does have a green acres restriction on it, which essentially converted it to open space. I have excluded in my investigation any quantitative analysis on the effects of the regulator station on this 400-plus acres for a number of reasons. Number one, agricultural land is, as a general rule, insensitive to surrounding uses. Number two, the value in agricultural land has already, by virtue of either green acres restrictions or by virtue of agricultural farmland conservation easements, the value of that property has already been largely removed. And just as evidence of that, as evidence of that, this land, we'll focus for a moment on the land which was, which has the farmland preservation on it, the 190 acres, this land was sold to the entities I mentioned earlier at a price which equates to about $25,000 per acre. Land without farmland restrictions on it in this marketplace sells for many multiples of that. For example, residential land, per acre, for a one-acre building lot, is going to sell on this market for anywhere between $300,000 and $400,000 per acre. Commercial land, land on which you can build office space or retail space, generally sells in the range of $1 million an acre. Farmland typically sells in the range of $10,000 to $20,000 an acre. And this particular farmland transacted all the way back in 2002 for, in the neighborhood of $25,000 an acre, which was a fraction of the price that the state paid in acquiring it. The takeaway from this is that the value in that agricultural land and green acres land has already been removed. It has already been eliminated by virtue of the conservation easements. And so my investigation then focused on the most dominant land uses in the neighborhood in terms of allocation of property values, those uses being residential homes and by extension, the building lots, as well as focusing on the commercial property in the neighborhood, which is overwhelmingly office space. I narrowed for, for the, in quantifying the effects on residential home values, I narrowed the list of all of the entire, the entirety of the regulator stations in the northern part of New Jersey down to four stations, all of which are located in Monmouth County. I selected those sites first because they have proximity, they are in the same county as Homedale, and secondly, they had residential homes nearby to the station, which were closer on average to the station than is true for Homedale Road. And so for the residential part of my analysis, I focused on four existing regulator stations, those being in Coltsneck, in Linkroft, in Wall Township, and in the Cliffwood section of Aberdeen. For the effects on commercial real estate, I found that the existing stations, as a rule, were not located near to commercial uses. As a rule, they were located near to homes and not to businesses. Those were the locational characteristics of those sites. And so for the commercial property investigation, I utilized a site in Morris Plains, that's the address, it's actually in Porcipity Township, because there, there is a regulator station in close proximity to office buildings, and those were a suitable comparison to our subject neighborhood, which has the largest land value allocation being for offices. Having identified these five sites, four in Monmouth County, which were residential neighborhoods, and one in Morris County, which was an office building site, I then identified the surrounding land uses by block and lot and address, and conducted a five-year investigation of transactions of those properties during the last five years. In other words, I looked to see whether any of the homes or commercial buildings in Morris Plains, which were close to the regulator station, had either sold, in the case of the houses, or had been leased, in the case of the office space. And I did identify sales of houses and leases of office space in close proximity to those regulator stations during the last five years. Those properties that identified, that identified as having sold within five years in close proximity to a regulator station are referred to in my report as targets. These are properties that have the same characteristics of our subject neighborhood. These are houses and commercial space which are located near to a regulator station, as would result if the regulator station on Homedale Road were to be approved and constructed. Having, having identified those, the next step in my investigation was to, was to identify what we call control transactions. For the houses, that means sales of homes in the same town where homes adjacent to the station or close to the station had sold, but where these controls were a great distance away from the regulator station. And so there are two sets of analytics that I've prepared. The first one is, for the housing market, sales of houses that are close to the regulator station while it existed. And then I've matched those up with sales of extremely similar houses, like-kind houses with similar characteristics, which also sold at the same time in those same towns, but which are a great distance away from the regulator station. You can see the results of that analysis on page 10 of my report. And on page 10, you'll, you will see a table which summarizes all of this analysis. In that chart, on the left side of the table on page 10, I have identified the various properties in Monmouth County which sold within the last five years and were near to an existing regulator station. On the right side of that chart, there is a companion analysis for similar houses in the same towns which sold on or about the same dates, but which were a great distance from a regulator station. By comparing the transaction prices to both groups, the control properties, which if there was an effect of the regulator station, would exhibit that in their selling prices, to other properties which are very similar homes, but on the other side of town, far away from the regulator station, I am able to, the reader is able to observe whether there is any adverse effect on home price values as a result of that proximity. What this table shows here is that, on average, on an unadjusted basis, the difference in selling prices between the target properties near to a regulator and the control properties distant from a regulator was 0%.
Could you just repeat that, please?
Zero.
Zero.
On average, on an unadjusted basis, the selling prices, and comparing the selling prices of homes that were near to these regulator stations in Monmouth County, compared to other homes like them which sold around the same date and had similar characteristics, the difference in the unadjusted selling prices was 0%.
Thank you.
I took my analysis one step further, because there were some minor differences between these properties, and I then applied adjustments to compensate for the differences. So one home might have been a little younger, and the other one a little older. We're talking in small variances. One home may have had a little larger lot, and the other one a little smaller lot, and so on. After applying these different, these adjustments to the selling prices for those differences, the average differential changed from 0% to 0.5%, one half of 1%. What this tells us is that there is no measurable effect on the value of homes as a result of their being near to a natural gas regulator station. And just to provide some perspective here, differences of 0% or even 0.5% are inconsequential. They're not even measurable in the marketplace. And we would need to see dramatically larger differentials for there to On average, on an unadjusted basis, the selling prices, and comparing the selling prices of homes that were near to these regulator stations in Monmouth County, compared to other homes like them which sold around the same date and had similar characteristics, the difference in the unadjusted selling prices was 0%.
Thank you.
I took my analysis one step further, because there were some minor differences between these properties, and I then applied adjustments to compensate for the differences. So one home might have been a little younger and the other one a little older, we're talking in small variances. One home may have had a little larger lot and the other one a little smaller lot, and so on. After applying these different, these adjustments to these selling prices for those differences, the average differential changed from 0% to 0.5%, one-half of 1%. What this tells us is that there is no measurable effect on the value of homes as a result of their being near to a natural gas regulator station. And just to provide some perspective here, differences of 0% or even 0.5% are inconsequential. They're not even measurable in the marketplace, and we would need to see dramatically larger differentials for there to be evidence of concern. I would also point out that, on average, the homes in the target group, homes elsewhere in Monmouth County which sold and were near to a regulator station are, on average, half the distance from those regulator stations as the homes along Home Del Road, taking them all into account in their entirety, looking at average distances. So not only was there no difference in the price that those homes sold for in those towns, in those years that were near to a regulator station, but they were half the distance from the regulator station. And then carried my investigation into the commercial real estate market. I found that there had not been any transactions, any sales of the commercial space in Morris Plain, near to Morris Plain Station in Precipity Township, which is not, which is not unsurprising because commercial property tends to have longer periods of ownership. And so what I focused on, in the absence of selling price comparisons, as I used for the homes, in, as an alternative, I looked at leasing prices, the price that office space in an office building which is immediately adjacent to a station, what is the leasing price, the rental rate for that space compared to other office space in the same town which is a further distance away from the regulator station? And as you may know, rental rates are a proxy for value, because commercial property's value is determined by its income, and the income is a direct result of what the leasing rates are at property. In looking at that comparison which appears on page 11 of my report, I found the same conclusion, no evidence that proximity to a regulator station would have any adverse effect on the value of commercial property. Now, as a reminder, the commercial property and the residential property in this neighborhood account for a supermajority of value in the neighborhood. They are the dominant uses in terms of the value of that property in the neighborhood. This investigation has indicated that there is no effect on either, as the market sees it. Now, that doesn't mean that someone already living in a neighborhood wouldn't object to the, to a regulator station being installed, but that's not the scope of my investigation. The focus of my work is that whether you like it or not, when it comes time to sell it, the next buyer or the next user won't take this into account in any way, and therefore there will not be any reduction, any diminution in the value of that property. And so in conclusion, my investigation has determined that the approval and construction of this regulator station will not have any adverse effect on neighborhood property values, which is what my study, study's purpose was.
Thank you, Mr. Alto. I don't have any questions for Mr. Alto.
Court, any questions for the court? Any questions? Professional?
There was a lot there. I almost wanted to ask as you were going along, but I didn't want to interrupt you. So the first question, first little notation, although it didn't seem to have a big bearing on your evaluation, is you identified boundaries that you studied at the beginning of your testimony, but I don't see a map in the report that correlates to that, those boundaries.
If there is not, there is a map, but there's not a map that correlates to those boundaries, but the boundaries, let me get a little closer to this before I get scolded that I'm not speaking into the microphone, but the, but the, but the boundaries of that neighborhood definition appear on the bottom of page five and the top of page six.
And then, further, further along, you said you visited a lot of regulator stations. Are they listed in clear?
They are not. They are not.
What you ultimately did is you narrowed them down to five, and how did you achieve that five?
After determining that the only portion of the subject neighborhood which was potentially at risk of a value decline would be commercial uses and residential uses, I then focused on only those existing stations which were near to, close to, homes and commercial space. After that cut was made, I then made the decision that I should focus on the residential portion specifically on nearby sites in Monmouth County for obvious reasons.
I guess the reason I'm asking is...
Little louder, please.
The reason I'm asking is because I guess my interest is in determining how many of those stations were not near residential uses and uses like this. Out of the full number that there were, how many were not in this kind of neighborhood?
Yeah, so I'm going to answer that question in two parts. Number one, I did leave one of the selection criteria out of my testimony a few moments ago. I decided to focus on those sites which both had nearby houses and where those nearby houses had recently sold. There would be no way to construct this analysis absent real sales transactions near to those regulator stations. I can't tell you what the percentage of units of sites are that are near to houses or not.
The other, the other thing is now, just some clarification on, on the form, on the format of the, I guess it's called the matched pair analysis.
Little louder, please.
The matched pair analysis. I want to make sure I understand the, the table that's on page 10, the target group and the control group, there's 10, which means there were two residential properties evaluated at each station?
No, that's not correct.
Okay, so, because I have Colts Neck Township, Colts Neck Township, then Middletown Township...
All right, so if you'd like, I can just sort of walk you through that, because it is a little confusing or hard to follow. So if we can start on line one, which is the first pairing that you'll see. On line one, there is a property in Colts Neck Township which sold, located at 6 Richmond Court, which is located 1,575 feet from an existing regulator station. Now, just to give you a point of reference, the residential properties in the subject neighborhood are, on average, 2,130 feet. This property at 6 Richmond Court sold on December 5th of 2017. It had a selling price of $999,100. It included 5,242 square feet of living space, indicating that it sold for the equivalent of $191 per square foot. That property is then being compared to another property in Colts Neck at 6 Western Drive, which is 14,520 feet away from the station, so let's call that nearly three miles, which sold in September of 17 for $1,070,000. It had 5798 square feet, and it sold on an unadjusted basis for $185 a foot. After adjustments, as I described earlier, accounting for slight differences from one property to the next as to the number of bathrooms, the size of the lot, how many cars of garage capacity it had, that $185 per square foot on an unadjusted basis was adjusted to $191 per square foot, indicating that on an unadjusted basis there was a difference of 3%, and on an adjusted basis, a difference of 0%.
How old were those, how old were the subject properties? That's the, the Western and Richmond.
So that's not in the table, but I can give you that answer. 6 Richmond Court was 22 years old on the date of its sale, and 6 Western Drive was 25 years old, so very, very similar, same vintage.
So I'm going to ask the question again, make sure I understand the answer. There were four properties, not two, so two close to the regulator station and two further away for each regulator?
Again, not correct.
No.
So we've only gotten through the first row, and if you'd like, I can sort of orient you to the rest of the table so you can understand that. In Colts Neck, there is a second target property at 2 Highfield Lane, 832 feet in distance from the regulator station, which was compared to a single similar house at 29 Maple, located about a mile away, 5,300 linear feet distance. If we can drop down to line four, you'll notice on line four, and now this is the, this is the Lindcroft Station, which is inside of Middletown Township.
Wait a minute, I thought we, so, so it's no longer compared to the same regulator stations? So two close to the, the Colts Neck is close to which, which station?
The Colts Neck.
The Colts Neck Station. So two evaluated close to the Colts Neck Station and two evaluated far from the station.
That's right.
Okay, and then three and four would be two close to the Lindcroft Stations and two far from the Lindcroft Station.
Yeah, so, not quite. So in Middletown Township, you can see that there are a total of four target properties listed. They appear on rows three, four, five, six, and seven. Actually, there are five target properties listed. If, if for a moment, we can only look at row four, row four being 21 Oak Street, which was located 1,125 feet from the regulator station, that has been compared to where you see multiple addresses to the right of that, three pairings of similar houses which had an average distance of 4,400 square feet. So there's actually four properties involved in that one row. The one house near to the station compared to three other houses in Lindcroft, a greater distance from the regulator station.
And so that's, that's like a, like a comp analysis, and those other addresses are in the report?
They're not, but they can certainly be provided.
The assumptions that were involved in the adjustments that were made?
Yes.
And the assumptions of where the percentage adjustment, are those in the report as well?
They are not.
So I would find it helpful because I can't, maybe I have a familiarity with it and other people don't, but I can't...